Good evening, welcome to our meeting. Would you join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Southwick, your report please.
Well, we've got a lot of exciting things to share with the board and with the public tonight, and I've got a glass of water because I know I will probably be dry by the time I read all this information. So, I want to start off with students at Shawnee Mission Northwest Interact Club. They partnered recently with the Lenexa Rotary Club to fight hunger. Together they packed Meals for Rise Against Hunger, a relief group that feeds the hungry. They packed more than 24,000 meals. We're proud of these students for their time and their generous spirit. So, great kudos to our students at Shawnee Mission Northwest. Our signature program and the CAA has its first state championship. The students in our medical program, Medical Studies Program, studied carpal tunnel syndrome. They received top prize competition called Night at the Lab. Now they'll be able to attend the statewide conference, the Kansas Idea Network of Biomedical Research Excellence in January. Most of the people who present at this conference are professionals. Our students will be the only high school students presenting their work. In the past three years Shawnee Mission Medical Science students have been named champion twice and runner-up once. Medical Science Program is taught by Connie Gandy. Great accomplishment. Shawnee Mission North team wins district-wide baking challenge at the Broadmoor Bistro. You know it's a great day here at the Center for Academic Achievement when we have a pie baking contest. Students enrolled in the advanced food course from all of the high schools participated. They used the Broadmoor Bistro kitchen. They all baked double crust apple pies, which is part of the curriculum. It's not a bad curriculum. We all got to taste them, not we all Terry, they didn't do sugar-free, so I didn't eat any, so we're good with that. But Shawnee Mission North students were named the champion. It's quite an event and it smelled very nice in the Center for Academic Achievement that day. Madison Cole, a Hocker Grove student illustrates a storybook. Madison's a 7th grader at Hocker Grove Middle School. She worked with author Kevin Robinson, author of Grandfather and Grandmother Bear Stories. It's a beginning reader's book of life lessons. Robinson was impressed with Cole's watercolor illustrations. Madison Cole enjoys music, dance, art, and she says she'd like to illustrate books in the future. Again, in middle school, kids were already connecting with their element and Madison is an example of that. Kudos to her. Indian Woods student is the star of tomorrow. Audrey Cotton, an 8th grader, was selected to be the 2017 Starlight Theater Star of Tomorrow. This is an exclusive group of performers who auditions to be selected. Now they'll perform song and dance medley at the holiday events across the metro. A schedule of performances on our website. Hopefully if you will maybe have an opportunity to go see her. It's never too young to help other people. Extremely proud of Briarwood and our pre-kindergarten students. They held a rock sale to support United Way of Kansas City. When I was growing up, we could buy pet rocks, but this is a little bit different. Some of our pre-K students at Briarwood wanted to give back. They collected rocks from their playground. Hopefully none that you needed, Mr. Robinson. They studied, sorted, and decorated them. Then they sold them in their own way at the rock store. All the proceeds were donated to the United Way. Their teachers Lisa Birbilia, I'm sorry. Emily Rubel wanted them to learn more about people and how they could help them. Shawnee Mission South teacher PJ Born received a Teaching Environmental Stewardship Award. The award comes from Kansas City Environmental Education Network. The honor is given annually to a teacher who provides exceptional environment education to students. PJ teaches and manages the Environmental Science Lab at Shawnee Mission South. He also trains students each year to teach environmental education to preschool and elementary students. His students regularly place as top finishers in the state ECO meet. The top three teams in the East Kansas National Speech and Debate Association District Debate Tournament were from Shawnee Mission high schools. Shawnee Mission Northwest students earned 4th place, Shawnee Mission East students earned 2nd place, and Shawnee Mission West students earned 3rd place. Those teams now qualify for a national competition this summer in Florida. I was told that Shawnee Mission North also took a 4th place as well. The tournament brought together 28 teams from 10 schools. We're proud of our debaters, we know how hard they work. We also thank their sponsors for the time and dedication it takes for our students to perform as well as they do. Shawnee Mission West student Caroline Smith performs the National Honor Ensemble. Carolyn is a senior clarinist from Ferinetist? Somebody help me with that, that's close. At Shawnee Mission West, she earned the top spot on the National Association of Music Education's 2017 All-National Honor Ensembles. This is the first Shawnee Mission student ever to earn this position. She was also first chair at the All-State Competition last year. As a part of the ensemble, Carolyn performed under the direction of some of the most prominent conductors in the country. Caroline is a three-year member of the District Honor Band and is a two-year member of the State Honor Band. She's also a member of the Kansas City Youth Symphony Program. She also performed with the Shawnee Mission West Symphony Orchestra and with the West Pride Marching Band. Bill Thomas, Shawnee Mission West Band Director, works very closely with Caroline. He said that it's an honor to work with such a talented young lady. Thanks to them both. The district was recently recognized by the Mid-America Regional Council for Outstanding Recycling and Compost Program, actually last Friday at the Kaufman Center. By the end of this school year, every school in the Shawnee Mission School District will be involved in recycling and composting food waste. In just one semester, we can generate nearly 107 tons of food and paper. Also, we've eliminated Styrofoam trays, disposable flatware, single-use water bottles. Our students are learning about closed-loop processes, how food is recycled and returned as finished compost for schools gardening projects and for growing food. Thanks not only go to the board for the vision, for allowing this program to grow in the district, but also specifically for Joan Levens, who's taken the lead for us and worked throughout our community and our schools, and particularly community engagement. This is the sort of impact that will save this planet and protect our future. Having our youngest citizens learn about what it is to be truly responsible, and I kind of think in Shawnee Mission, we're saving the planet one school and one student at a time. District leaders recently shared our legislative platform. We reached out to all of our legislators and then for those of you that may have been in the meeting last month, the board adopted their legislative platform for what will be a very important legislative session for education. So we hosted our lunch, we talked about our platform, which can be found on our website. We discussed the upcoming session. Our platform this year broadly outlines the district visions and policy positions and serves as a basis for advocacy for 2018. It also, I think, takes a much stronger look at not only what's best for the Shawnee Mission School District, what's best for Johnson County schools, but trying to look very closely at how we work together to support schools across the state of Kansas. The legislature convenes on the second Monday in January and is scheduled to adjourn early in May, and I can assure you that the Shawnee Mission School District will be actively involved in that session. So, the 2018 National Association of Professional Development Schools, and I will admit I had to ask someone today what that acronym was, but I was educated very quickly. Our district has been invited to present at its annual conference in Florida this spring. The premier conference brings together schools and university partnerships from around the country and abroad. We'll present our innovative practices, including the partnership with K-State that supports best practices in teacher preparation. Through the innovative school model, student-teachers are able to hone their craft and advance their practices, blending learning, project-based learning, vertical and horizontal looping, and advances to support new learning technology. It's an honor for our staff to have been invited to speak at this national event, and I'm sure our district will be well represented. Haven't had a construction update recently because some of our projects have died down, but wanted to talk just a little bit. Brookwood Elementary is underway and completion date scheduled for spring of 2019. Lenexa Hills is really ahead of schedule and we believe that we won't have any trouble making our August date to open that school. We really don't have an option because we don't have another school to move those kids into, so we will be opening Lenexa Hills in August. Our Aquatic Center is just now beginning to set up the construction process. The trailers are up, the barriers around the roads are there, and we look for after the first of the year, you begin to see very quickly some precast concrete walls that will go up. On the agenda tonight is one of the final pieces of a bond issue with respect to athletic fields. We'll be asking the board to approve the completion and renovation of the soccer stadium at West Ridge, so we're excited about that. And now it's time for, I think, one of the highlights that we've had over the last several months, our All-Means All-Star Award and our winners for, I think our first introduction tonight comes from Russell Knapp, Chief Financial Officer for the district. How are you doing, Russ?
I'm good. Good evening. It's my privilege to introduce Becky Collins as one of tonight's All-Means All-Star. You may or may not know Becky, but you are familiar with her work as Becky and her staff has had their hands on many of the board agenda items that have been brought forward for board approval over the years. Becky has been the purchasing supervisor for the past three and a half years. She got her start in the district as a para in 1998 and soon moved to the Purchasing Department as an expediter and then as a buyer and then promoted to the supervisor role. After a short warm-up, Becky and her staff became very involved with the $223 million bond projects, as you just saw in many of those pictures, in addition to purchasing many of the equipment and furniture that you see in the Center for Academic Achievement. Needless to say, Becky and the purchasing department became very busy pretty fast. I'm very pleased to know that Becky's nomination came from someone outside the business office. I think this is a good indication of her customer service mentality. She aims to please. When I first told her of her nomination, I teased her that she would have to bring somebody to the board meeting tonight. Her first response to me was, "Can I bring my staff? I couldn't have done this without them." This attitude and her willingness to work with all our buildings and department across the district makes her an All-Means All-Star. Now here's the video.
She is a great purchasing manager.
She has a can-do attitude.
She's a great team player.
Dedicated district employee.
She's just a real great asset to the team.
She works very hard and she is the type that rolls her sleeves up and gets into it herself. She likes to see it from beginning to end and she likes it to be as accurate as possible.
She's always willing to listen to ideas and she's just, we're definitely a team and she is a great leader.
She cares to do whatever is necessary to get the job done.
Over the last four-plus years Becky and I have worked on securing a variety of materials and equipment to enhance the learning opportunities for our students.
To have a group like Becky runs in her department, they're always friendly, ready to help you with whatever you need help with.
Yeah, I think she is the persona of an All-Means All-Star.
It validates my great decision that I made hiring you three years ago to be a purchasing supervisor. I think you've been doing a great job. I think you continue to grow every year and I appreciate all your effort that you do for the business office and the district as a whole.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I'd just like to real quick thank Dr. Strike and Cher Sberry and everyone who spoke on my behalf, Russell, Dr. Atha, and of course my team, like I said, I couldn't do anything without them. That's Kathy Gar, Everett Morgan, our purchasing agents, and Carol Guild, our purchasing department secretary. Between the four of us, we have almost 90 years of service with the district and we're very proud of that, so thank you very much.
So for our second nominee tonight, I think we have Cory Strathman here from Rosehill. Has an introduction to bank.
Good evening. It's my privilege to introduce the All-Means All-Star from Rosehill this evening. Mrs. Kim Mann has served as a math specialist at Rosehill for the last five years. Mrs. Mann is a model of a staff member that builds genuine relationships with students, staff, and parents in the Rosehill community. Her expertise and effort goes far beyond the area of a math specialist, however. She has a mission to excite and provide as many positive experiences for students at Rosehill as she can. Mrs. Mann leads the Math Club, the Chess and Board Game Club, the Community Service Club, and the Code Club at Rosehill, so needless to say, her mornings are extremely busy. Our Code Club was started two years ago and it had about 15 to 20 students. In this year, we had to move the Code Club to the gym to accommodate the 70-plus members that we have. That's a direct reflection on Kim Mann. Kids are excited to come to school at Rosehill and she is a big reason why. I'm going to give you just a snapshot of some of the things that her clubs have done just recently. So the Code Club went to the Delmar Gardens Assisted Living Facility last week and she taught, her kids taught the residents how to code. If you remember last board meeting, we had our Code Club here teaching you all how to code, which I'm sure you're applying in the everyday life now. And going back to the Shawnee Mission Education Foundation Breakfast, our Code Club was featured in the hallways there and they were grabbing anyone that walked by to share their joy and their knowledge. So, a big impact in the Code Club. But it's not just that. Just this morning, her Community Service Club had donated blankets that they made to the uplift organization to help keep others warm during this winter. It's things like that that Kim Mann provides to our students and our community that makes her shine above the rest. We appreciate everything that she does to go above and beyond to help benefit the community at Rosehill and the Shawnee Mission School District, so we are all excited that she is earning and being recognized with this well-deserved honor tonight. So here's her video.
Kim Mann is someone that cares a lot about people, number one. She cares about the kids at Rosehill, so she is someone that's always brainstorming what she can do to make an impact for all the kids.
She helps you, she's supportive of you, and she challenges you.
When we need help doing a math problem or like figuring out some code piece, she makes me feel like supported and like I can do it.
Kim deserves the All-Means All-Star Award because she cares about every kid, she cares about every staff, and if parents come to her and ask, "What can I do to help my kid?" she's there.
Sometimes you just need a little bit of support and you need a little bit of help to get through.
I can think of a student here at Rosehill who's had some real hard times in his young life already. Kim took him under her wing and due to extra time with him, I've seen him turn from an angry student to one that actually enjoys coming to math groups, and I attribute that totally to Kim and what she's poured into that child's life.
That's how she really meets that All-Means All-Starter. People see her as a great human being first and that's why she can relate to kids, to students, to parents, and to staff because she cares and she's a great person to be around.
She just deserves that award in every way.
I really hope she's excited.
Kim, I just want to say congratulations. I want you to know that your efforts do not go unnoticed and we sure love having you at Rosehill. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Miss Mann, on winning. Keep on doing what you do.
I couldn't have said it better. Congratulations.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you. I am very humbled because this district is bursting at the seams with incredible employees and many are here tonight, so thank you so much. I owe really a huge thank you to Cory. One of the very first things he said to us when he came to Rosehill was, "If you have an idea that is best for kids, something really good, come to me and we'll talk about it and I'll help you." And I do believe it's important to help the whole child, not just academics like math, that is very important, but there's also things like helping, learning how to give back to the community. And Cory obviously feels the same way and his door is wide open all the time. He's very helpful and very supportive, so thank you. I am so thankful for my math team. Beth Blackburn, Elaine Granberg, and Rachel Serna, honestly, they really are the reason things are so successful. We really do work as a team and it's the best feeling in the world to come to school. I love my job and I love my students. Teaching is not always easy, but the kids are amazing and we do work really hard together. But they are, they are the reason. They are the whole reason. I also have to thank my friends and family. I love the fact that they have come, they have made donations, they have come and helped a math night, and they've spoken to my Code Club. But I am very proud of my family. My girls will not be teachers unfortunately, but Annie has spent years volunteering weekly at Operation Breakthrough and Maddie has spent years weekly volunteering at schools in Kansas City and now in Indianapolis. And I just, I think I'm just so proud of the fact that they know that children are important and they're passing that along, so thank you very much.
So that concludes the presentation. I did have a conversation that I want to share some information, if I can, with the board this evening and maybe provide some clarification as we move forward. Dr. Denny and I had breakfast this morning and at breakfast, because of the commotion that was caused over the weekend as a result of you offering me very graciously an extension on my two-year contract, so we had a discussion about that. And this is really clarity for you, but clarity for people in the audience and public as well. I was honored as I sat with you all and you gave me my evaluation the other day and as I was honored to be asked to move this district along during transition. But you all have to make very difficult decisions all the time and you receive criticism for those from time to time. And I just thought that this particular decision and the outcry that cropped up across our district on social media was really not fair for you all to be put in a position to sit here tonight and say, "Should this man get an extension on his contract or not?" So for clarification, and I think you all know this, that as starting January 1st, I have two and a half years that I'm under contract with this district. And again, thank you for graciously offering me an additional year. I understand that we are in a time of transition and I want you to know that that extension is not what's important to me. So I asked Dr. Denny to remove it from the agenda and I want you to know, because I've not had a chance to visit with you, and anybody that might be in the audience to know, or anybody watching, that it was my decision to remove that contract extension because it should not be something that you all should have to deal with. And I will tell you tonight that I'm going to ask that it be removed permanently, that there not be consideration for me to move forward past the time that I have with the Again, I appreciate the opportunity as I spoke to Dr. Denny to give me a little bit of time to kind of clear the air about that. You all have been under attack. I've had some very ugly things that have been said about me and you really should not be subject to that, so if you have questions about that or my decision, I'll be glad to visit with you later, but again, I want you to know, because it was a surprise, that I asked that it be removed. A few other things that I would like to say is that you've just witnessed some really awesome things that go on in the Shawnee Mission School District. This is a great school district. There's thousands of things that happen on a daily basis that are great for kids. And we have a storied past, but we have a great future in front of us as well. But this is troubled time for the district. You know that, I know that, and I guarantee you our staff know it. The message that I want to share to you and the public is that we have great staff, whether they teach our kids, whether they clean our buildings, whether they cook our meals, whether they help teachers hone their skills, we have great staff. And I am calling tonight for the end of the divisiveness between administration and our staff and our community because it does not serve the good of the Shawnee Mission School District for that to happen. All of these people work for you and they work for this community and this school district. Many of them in the room tonight and I'm calling for the end of it. Now I'm sure someone tweets out immediately and will reframe this message in a different way, but if we want to move forward, now's the time that it ends. January 8th starts a new era. Please, for the benefit of our kids and our community, stop it. January 22nd, we'll do the second phase of Kindness Matters. So we'll be about the district with our staff and our students to explain to people why it's important that you be kind. I will plead to people in this room, to people that would watch a livestream, to people that love this district, to practice this and stop the ugliness. The last thing I want to say is we've got a report tonight from Ray &amp; Associates. You all know that the next superintendent for the Shawnee Mission School District watches every move we make and they read every word that's printed. And they're going to make a decision whether or not they want to be interested in the Shawnee Mission, to apply for Shawnee Mission, or to take this job. This next person, right now, is in tune to what's going on in the district. Again, now is the time to stop, for I fear we'll drive away the next great superintendent for the Shawnee Mission School District. I've said my piece. I care a lot about this district, I care a lot about the people that are in the audience that take the time to be here, and I care a lot about you, but I'm old. You know, my time is drawing towards the end, so just know how much I appreciate your support and your willingness to extend my contract, but it's not the biggest deal. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk about what I think is the biggest deal and that's to arrive upon some civility in the Shawnee Mission School District throughout our communities and our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Southwick. We have some special presentations.
We have some special presentations next. First is the Communications Department.
Yeah, so tonight we have a report from Erin Little and Shawna Samuel talking a little bit about some of the improvements that we've seen across our Communications Department over the last several months. I've asked them to prepare a presentation that shows the impact of some of our efforts. And without further ado, once the technosy works, thank you all for being here.
Thank you very much. To the Board of Ed members and to Dr. Denny and Dr. Southwick, thank you very much for Erin and I to have the opportunity to present to you an overview of the Communications Department and what we've done since we've been here since last February. We started at the beginning of the school year this year, a weekly communications results report. And this goes to the Cabinet and Board every week and it outlines not only the high volume of work that goes through our department, but how diverse the work is. We appreciate this opportunity. We're going to give you a very quick and high-level overview of our department. The district covers 72 square miles and serves 14 cities. There are more than 100,000 households in the district. There are 44 schools and an early education center. Our goal is to find a way to communicate the right message at the right time in the right way. We can use websites, social media, email, text, phone, and print, and broadcast media. And now, I'd like to introduce Erin.
Good evening. We have a wide variety of areas that we support for the Communications Department for the Shawnee Mission School District. Those include media relations, crisis communications for our staff as they have moments where they may need support from our department. We support for our website, for social media. We're public information officers. District events, video productions like our All-Means All-Star videos that you've seen tonight. Some of our big events for the year, our Shawnee Mission Education Fall Breakfast and our graduation broadcasts. We also have our Inside Magazine publication. And we support many student initiatives as well. A lot of our team members support on these on a weekly basis. Categories, encounters, live athletic broadcasts, and also scoreboard management for the new scoreboard. Shawna and I just represent two of our amazing team. And they are worth saying their names and certainly giving accolades because they are the people that help support us each and every day. We have Brad, Clayton, Owen, Tom, Judy, Kristen, and Mandy. And a big thank you to Dr. Neal because we have made no staffing changes since we've arrived to the district. And she is really the one who put together this amazing team that has helped to support us over the last year.
As many of you know, we rebranded the district this year. We have established a primary identity and have several different versions. We've also created some secondary identifying marks to create a family of logos that all tie up to that parent brand. This is an ongoing process. We have a lot of old logos still out there and no budget to go in and redo everything right now. So, I'm trying to be patient with that. But as the opportunity arises, we continue to infuse the new logo in anything that we do. We have also created brand standards to ensure that the logo is used correctly. We also named and designed the logo for Priority One Health Center, which is run by Marathon Health. This is a unique logo to our center created by our department. And we also created a rollout plan that allowed Marathon Health representatives the chance to present the details of the center to all of our employees over the fall. And we had a grand opening of that this fall. And so far, the health center has been a good benefit to our employees. It's also the Communication Department's job to brand the building. So, whether you see student artwork or you see a history wall, this is our team researching, writing, finding the photos, et cetera, et cetera. We have produced three issues of Inside Magazine. This was the March issue. Over the summer, perhaps you might have noticed that we had a redesign. We are just making it more fresh and modern to match the new brand. The Shawnee Mission School District is fortunate to be located in a very supportive community. This magazine is targeted not only to families, but to community members. It's mailed to 110,000 homes three times a year. And the advertising that we sell in the issue pays for the postage. We've done three issues so far this year. And a strong school district is a strong cornerstone to a community. So, this is an opportunity to show what's going on in the district to members far and wide. We have a few before photos compared to the after spreads. Research shows that the readership of print publications is actually increasing due to all of us having a bit of screen fatigue. And so, we have used headers and captions and lots of tricks of the trade to help people scan the magazine. And they can read it in 30 seconds, three minutes, or half an hour. We hope they spend a half an hour with it. We've also started a new publication called Direct from the District. This is a publication we can distribute immediately to families or staff with important news. Our goal is to improve internal communication. We want our most important audiences, our staff and our families, to hear the news when possible directly from the district. We have also created an overview piece that has been being used in the superintendent search. It is a two-page flyer that outlines the highlights of the district. And we are also now creating an annual report. This is the first iteration of design that will be printed in January. The website, we are, since, gosh, since August, we have written 131 news stories. We update the website almost every day, sometimes multiple times a day. And we will have a new website, new websites launched this spring. This is a very big undertaking. We have 60 sites between the schools, the departments, and our special sites. We have more than 125 webmasters that we have to train and get ready to use the sites. And there are incredibly complex backend databases and more than 20,000 pages of content that we are calling through and cleaning up. Our goal is to simplify the navigation, improve the user experience, and make it ADA compliant. And you'll see new sites this May. The scoreboard. New scoreboards were installed at Shawnee Mission South and next fall at Shawnee Mission North and then at the Aquatic Center. The LED video-enhanced screen in the center of the board will be a wonderful tool. We plan to have close-ups of students as they cross the stage during graduation. And we're selling the advertising panels that surround the board to pay for the LED functionality in the middle. It's a complex undertaking. It's about building community relationships, securing sponsors, writing contracts and invoices, trafficking ads, PA announcements, working with sponsoring partners to coordinate feature giveaway nights, et cetera, et cetera. This function is really equivalent to that of a media department and an ad agency. And we have, all four of the top prime panels are in conversations with sponsors. And so, we're working on that and plan to continue. Events. We have a big event department. We did the Brookwood Groundbreaking. All the students came and joined us for this important celebration. And groundbreaking, this is really an important opportunity to give the corporate and community partners recognition for all the support that they give the Shawnee Mission School District on these projects. Ryan Benninghoven, the school was open this fall and we had a dedication ceremony. Again, a very important chance to bring the community together and celebrate this great opportunity to have a new school and to thank our city and community partners. In this fall, we also had a grand opening for this building that we're in right now. This fall, when the true stars of the show arrived, the students in the signature programs, they produced tours for our visitors. And Dr. Southwick addressed the audience, again, a very important opportunity to bring everyone together. And instead of a ribbon cutting, we had a ribbon tying ceremony because this Center for Academic Achievement brings students from all five high schools together. We also did a Broadmoor Bistro grand opening. And to summarize, our job in the Communications Department is to take the restaurant from this to this. And we had a soft opening and then a hard launch. And we continue to support them as needed. In the fall, we broke ground for the Aquatic Center groundbreaking. This was an unusual one because we had five partners. The Shawnee Mission School District partnered with the City of Lenexa, Johnson County Parks and Rec, ACI Boland, and J.E. Dunn. And the collaboration is going to bring a wonderful facility to the city, the community members, and our students. And this fall, our cornerstone event is the Shawnee Mission Education Foundation Fall Breakfast. It was attended by more than 1,000 business and community leaders. And it's the foundation's main fundraising event. And this year's event netted $150,000. And now, I'd like to introduce my colleague, Erin Little, who is responsible for the breakfast planning this year. Thank you for this opportunity.
I think the wonderful thing about the Shawnee Mission Education Foundation Breakfast is the collaborative effort that we had this year between the foundation and the district. And I think I can probably speak for Dr. Southwick onstage during our presentation in October that, you know, having hundreds of kiddos who were singing and presenting and telling our story, their enthusiasm and making them feel special to be part of that production really was amazing. In addition to all of the district events that we certainly support on, we also support on media coverage across the Kansas City metro area. This is a scattergram of all of the media inquiries that we've had just since the month of August. There are quite a few. Each one is a new inquiry, meaning a new media outlet inquiring about a different story for the district. Coming into the district with over a decade experience in broadcast media, I can tell you that the Shawnee Mission School District is the number-one target over any other district across the 435 Loop. For news coverage, they want to say the Shawnee Mission School District and their broadcast as many times as they possibly can. And although that is certainly a heavy incoming support for the district, it is an amazing opportunity. It's an amazing opportunity to leverage the positive and wonderful stories that are happening each and every day. We have over 27,000 students, over 4,000 staff members. And each one of those are positive stories that are happening every single day in our rooms and in our classrooms. And they're all worth telling. Since the beginning of August, before school even started, I'm proud to say, along with all of the Communications Department members, that every single week of this school year, we have had positive media coverage on the local media stations. That's 21 consecutive weeks and counting. We've got more going this week. Here's just a few of them that we've had wonderful coverage from our first day of class back into the bistro to our games of the week. Our Halloween future stories, I think, really are telling, not only because of the coverage, but because the media now knows that they can call us and that we will give them one of our wonderful stories to cover for the district and an opportunity that maybe wasn't there before. Our aquatics groundbreaking, all of the events that we've covered had media coverage. I'm really proud on this graphic to talk about the food assistance that the Shawnee Mission School District offers to our community that was covered by the media. We have Project Blue Eagle that was covered. Our kiddos at Crestview got the Read to Achieve just last month, which was really exciting. We've had wonderful events covered during the holiday times as well. The turkey sale at the bistro. Our reaching for excellence recognition from our Shawnee Mission band and one of our Hawker Grove students that is an author. As we came into this new building, we had a new opportunity to really shine some new light on our signature programs. And I'm really proud to show you some of that coverage that we've had since August.
You know, I may look the part, but I'm definitely not ready to play it because what these students learn in the Blue Eagle program, it's amazing. They really learn hands-on. And we even have a PIO with us, Chris Wolf. What are we seeing right now? What are these guys doing?
Right now, we have a demonstration of a dumpster fire here in the parking lot. What these firefighters are going to be doing is advancing hose line and keeping each other protected in the process of doing so. The biggest part of this job is how do we work together as a team? And how do we keep each other safe while we are on scene?
Just a few days ago, while preparing food here in this kitchen, Andrew Nauman realized he was also paving the way for his future.
I kind of got involved because I really just didn't want to eat TV dinners for the rest of my life. But I just instantly fell in love with it. And I'm actually planning on trying to go to college for it and like making a career out of it.
What do you feel like coming to the center? Because there are all sorts of areas where you can learn.
I think it's just a great opportunity to like further our learning. It gives us like access to different technology and things like that.
And just real quickly, what did you want to be when you grow up?
I wanted to be a nurse. And this is really helping me like decide what kind of nurse I want to be.
Perfect, all because of Carl, right here. All right, so we're going to talk more about the center and what they have to offer. So many different areas here.
And when you look at some of the analytics, again, just since the month of August, the district in terms of TV media coverage here in Kansas City has reached, just in terms of positive news stories for the Shawnee Mission School District, over 4 million here in the city. If you were to want to advertise on local media and push some of those positive stories out, it would have cost the district almost a half of a million. In addition to TV media, we also know how very important social media is as well. Our most performing and most proud story that we covered was from one of our teachers, Mr. Doland at Mill Creek and his send-off.
......
Today, we had a surprise assembly for our PE teacher, Jason Doland. He is being deployed overseas. And so, we wanted to truly honor him. We wanted to come together, invite his family. We invited a councilman from Lenexa. His commander and master sergeant were in presence today.
We protect the freedoms that we as Americans have in our country.
And we had the watchdog dads doing 200 push-ups, totaling the amount of days that he is going to be absent from us at Mill Creek.
To show our appreciation for your dedication to serving and protecting our country, the watchdogs, we'd like to take care of your yard maintenance. That includes mowing, leaf pickup, snow removal while you're away.
So, we just wanted to take this day. We wore the color blue, which is his favorite color, wrap around him and show his family that we're here to support him, even though he's not going to be here with us, that we love him and that we wish him the best in his journey and can't wait for him to return.
Okay, and I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you, my friends, my family, community. Guys, I won't let you down. All right, so thank you so much.
And I thought you'd like to see his smile as he was very happy to receive a goodie love box from his Mill Creek family that he posted on Twitter. And although the social media hits are wonderful, we had over 15,000 on Facebook with that. I think what is really outstanding is that the energy and enthusiasm and love that we had in that gymnasium that day that I was lucky enough to witness, that we were able to share that with our community. On social media, specifically Twitter, since August, we've had over 5 million conversations that involve the Shawnee Mission School District. When you factor in the reshares, that totals over 8 million conversations on social media that involve our district. This is a timeline since August of the conversations. And this is important to note because we continue to be relevant. We continue to have those upticks as we are moving through the school season. In terms of some of our biggest peaks, I think it's worth noting, August 2nd, before school even started, our team worked very hard for all of our back-to-school initiatives. And that started before classes actually began, in addition to our Fall Breakfast and the November elections. I also think this is very important to note. There will always be some portion of the community that has negative conversations. There will be. But overwhelmingly, they are positive. There is a lot of pride and happiness and joy in our classrooms. And I think it's important for you to see that data. We cover so many different events in so many ways that we support for the district. But this is what I'm most proud of. And I know I speak for Shawna as well. The support that we offer our principals. Can't tell you how many times a principal will call in a moment of crisis. And they are just doing their best to keep our kids safe and to make sure that they are okay. And I can tell you that it has certainly been my pleasure to support them and my privilege to help them find words in a moment where they're just trying to keep our kids safe. And we help them communicate that. Thank you. Thank you.
So Shawna and Erin, thank you very much for the detailed presentation. It's been a while putting this together, but we appreciate it. We're on an uptick, I believe, in terms of communications. It's a hard word to define, but we appreciate your work. It's also a little bittersweet tonight because those of you may look at the agenda, but I know the board is aware, tonight you will act on Erin's resignation. She's leaving the district and will be involved in other endeavors, and we wish you all the best, and we thank you for the time that you spent here in the district. Now, Mark, is are we a little better now than we were when you came? And from my estimation, we are, so thank you for your time, and we wish you the best of luck. So now we have a presentation from the Shawnee Mission Education Foundation to talk to us about some exciting activity with the foundation.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Southwick. Dr. Denny, Board of Education. My name is Kim Hinkle. I'm the Executive Director of the Shawnee Mission Education Foundation. Tonight, I have three board members here with me. Our Board President, Anthony Springfield, our immediate past President, Dan Shipfer, and Board Member Jill Jolliker. And we're very excited that they are here just to listen to me, which is always a nice place to be in. So it's the season of giving, and the foundation thought that it was only appropriate to fund some really great projects that we just simply think our kids cannot live without. And so first up, several years ago, the foundation helped the district roll out the Project Lead the Way STEM curriculum to our elementary schools. We helped pilot it at five schools and then roll it out to every elementary school in the district, and it's gone very, very well and had a lot of success. But it's really hands-on, and our kids build stuff and build stuff with this curriculum. And we found out that some third and fourth graders have these VEX construction kits, and they're really cool. In my day, they were called like tanker toys or something, but they are way, way bigger deal than that now. And kids would start a project, but then the next class would come in, and so they wouldn't have time to really finish what they were building, and the foundation doesn't think that's acceptable. So we are purchasing 400 VEX kits for the district so that every single third and fourth grade classroom will have all they could possibly need. So we're very excited about that. We're hopeful that these robust experiences with STEM subjects in elementary school will lead our students into our signature programs in STEM, programs like our biotechnology. And so our biotech students are learning and using world-class research and lab skills, so we believe that they need world-class equipment. And so with the help of American Century Foundation, we are going to purchase thermal cyclers for our biotechnology students. And you might think that that would only be here at the Center for Academic Achievement. We're actually going to buy them for every single high school, for our intro course biotech students. And so what is a thermal cycler, you might ask? Well, it is a device used to amplify samples of DNA, and the technology is a fundamental part of forensics labs, biotech labs, medical diagnostics labs, and environmental labs. So we believe that all of our students should have access to these, and they're portable so they can just get that DNA and look at it wherever they might be. So that can be a little scary, or it can be a really great learning opportunity, whatever you think about that. Now on to two of my favorite things, art and teachers. Through a very prestigious partnership with our friends at Johnson County Community College and the district, and the John F. Kennedy Center for the Performing Arts in Washington, DC, Kennedy Center teaching artists have been coming into our schools and helping our teachers use artistic concepts in the classroom. And this program has been going on for a while, but the foundation is absolutely thrilled that for the first time, we are supporting this year the entire partnership between the district, Johnson County, and the John F. Kennedy Center. So we are excited to be a small part of that and know that this great program will continue. We also have had exciting news from some of our loyal funding partners. First, we want to thank First National Bank. We just heard they are giving us $5,000 to support equipment purchases for our Project Blue Eagle signature program, and I know they join us in being really excited about helping our future fire, police, and EMT professionals. So they're a great partner. We also have another great historical partner, the TerraCon Foundation, has recently given us nearly $5,000 to help us with the purchase of some robotics kits for all of our engineering signature program students, and we are thrilled about that. Again, we don't think that it should just be at the Center for Academic Achievement. We think it should be out in all of the intro courses as well, so we're getting those for all five high schools, as well as the Center for Academic Achievement. I'd like to personally thank Dr. Craig Denny, who helped us apply to the TerraCon Foundation, and we're very grateful to you, and just on also a personal note for all of your years of service. So thank you very much for your help with that. So that's all I've got. It's about a $100,000 holiday gift for you, and we're pretty excited. So thank you very much for allowing us the opportunity to be your partner. We're thrilled. Thanks.
Thank you, Kim. So our next presentation that we have is our Comprehensive Annual Fiscal Report. Russ calls this the CAFER. Russ would normally make introductions, but he told me that it would be odd if he came up and then immediately sat down, so he asked me if I would do it, so I will. Tonight, we have Abram Chrislip from Meishauser specializing in city and school district audits. Meishauser has offices in Topeka and Lawrence and Overland Park, and they performed our audits since 2012. The Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, CAFER, is posted on the district's website under Public Information, and he is here tonight to talk to us a little bit about what I believe is a good review. So welcome. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for having me. I think this is the first year that we've been asked to come and actually present the audit to the board, and so I spoke a little bit with Russell Knapp in advance to kind of decide what areas we wanted to focus on, and we kind of came up with kind of three key components. We wanted to talk a little bit about the reason for the audit, just in general. Secondly, to go over the main objectives of the audit, and then third, of course, to touch on the results. So I'll start with just going through the reason for the audit. Quite simply, all school districts within the state of Kansas are required to have an annual financial audit performed by an independent CPA, so we are fulfilling that. Makes it different from, say, an IRS audit, which are, you know, unscheduled, unplanned. This is something that is planned well in advance. We're in communication with the district throughout the entire process, and it occurs annually. Something somewhat unique to Shawnee Mission is that most school districts in the state of Kansas report under what's called the Kansas Regulatory Basis of Accounting, which is kind of a modified cash basis, and it allows them to present more simplified financial statements. Shawnee Mission, as well as a few of the other larger districts, report under what's called Generally Accepted Accounting Principles, which is full accrual basis of accounting. Means that we have to include things like fixed assets, long-term liabilities, accounts receivable, things of that nature. It's a more comprehensive audit, and it's a much more comprehensive set of financial statements. One of the reasons that the district has to have that is because its bond ratings. This type of audit enables the district to keep its AAA bond rating. It's also required to be filed by the end of, I think it's 180 days after the end of the year to comply with some of those bond standards. Moving on to the objective of the audit, we have a couple of them there. The first one is that we are just simply expressing an opinion on the financial statements as a whole. Secondly, we are reporting on the district's compliance with the applicable laws and regulations, and we're also reporting on the district's internal controls. And the reason we're doing those internal control and laws and regulation compliance requirements are because the district spends more than $750,000 a year in federal aid, and that requires those additional audit requirements. As Dr. Southwick mentioned, this is a Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which means it's not only the basic financial statements, but it also includes things like management discussion and analysis, and also some supplementary information like the statistical analysis section at the back. Going on to the results, the first page of the CAFER gives what's called our opinion, and there's a number of different opinions that auditors can express, and we have expressed what's called an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, used to be known as an unqualified opinion. It is the highest opinion that we can express and obviously reflects very positively on the financial management within the district. It basically means that we believe these financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. It's the opinion you'd want to have. Going on to the second and third objectives, just to give you a little more background about how that works, anytime a district spends more than $750,000 in federal aid, we have to look at that schedule of federal awards, determine which are the major programs, and we have to audit every major program at least once every three years, and we also have to audit at least 20% of the federal aid overall every year. So this year, in order to meet those standards, we picked the Child Nutrition Grant as the federal grant that we were auditing. We went through that process. There's a number of different requirements and procedures that we go through, and then we report on that. And the findings in the report show that we had no instances of significant noncompliance and no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls, which again is obviously the result you'd want. We also have to apply those same standards to the financials as a whole, and again, we had no significant findings, no significant deficiencies, no material weaknesses. So all in all, it's a very positive report. We really enjoy working with the district. We've been working with the district for a long time now. Russell and his staff do a wonderful job of getting us the information we need. It's been a very positive experience working with the district, and we really appreciate the confidence that you all place in us as your auditors. And if you have any questions at this point, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you.
More of a curiosity, do you engage with the bond rating agencies? Do they call you directly, or does everything flow through our office? No, they do not. Yeah, the district files the CAFER with something called EMA, which is a, I guess, filing composite agency, and then the bond counsel pulls those financial statements off, and they review them. But there's not generally a lot of communication between the auditors and bond counsel unless there's a question, then they may contact us, but that's not been the case recently here, so.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and also thanks to Russ's staff for all the work we do. It's hard to manage the workings of the district and the amount of money that flows through to meet the needs of kids, so thank you all very much, and we look forward to seeing you back next year.
That's right. Thank you.
Well, I guess maybe I'll introduce this one. We are in the midst of a superintendent search, and Dr. Brenda Dietrich is here with her colleague from Ray and Associates to give us an update. So welcome to our meeting.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. This is Dr. Ralph Turan, who's also working on the Shawnee Mission Superintendent Search. So the application process closed on Friday, and we have compiled some general demographic information for you about the candidate pool, and I'm very pleased to tell you that there are 65 applications. So we are in the process now of vetting those, but here are some of the interesting pieces of information about those applicants. You have 49 of the 65 that have doctorates. Remember, that was a discussion that we had at the board level, whether that was important to you or not. 30 of those 65 applicants are currently sitting superintendents, which is a good ratio. 32 of the 65 are either deputy superintendents, assistant superintendents, or associate superintendents. So you've got a strong leadership pool there. Many of those deputies and assistants are from much larger districts. So Ralph has some fun facts for you as well.
11 of the applicants are female, 54 of the applicants are male. This is pretty much appropriate to the number of males and females in superintendencies. Still largely male, it's increasing, and that's good, but 11 female, 54 male. 14 of the 65 are minority applicants, African-American, Hispanic, or Indian.
I'd also mention that of the 65 completed applications, we have six that are incomplete, and that just means the application was started, but we don't know why the individual didn't complete it, and we'll be calling them to find out if they're intending on completing that or not. So that will be, that may, that number may increase, but they've got to get it done here very quickly. All the applicants came from many states across the United States. We had many from Kansas, we had several from 25 other states, including Alaska. We didn't have anybody from Hawaii. Can you imagine that? Surprising. We had two from foreign countries because they are Americans working overseas in either Abu Dhabi or China who made application as well. So states with the most applicants, Kansas had nine, Texas seven, Colorado six, and Florida five. So do you have any questions about those demographics? Because we want to talk to you just briefly about the next steps. Comfortable with that? Good. So your next steps. Now, you know what we're going to do, I guess our next steps. We're going to analyze those applications and compare them to the profile that you developed in this district for your next superintendent, and then we'll cull that applicant pool to determine who would be probably most suitable to bring forward for the board to consider. So we'll look at their references, we'll look at their skill level, their education level, the kind of a district that they're coming from, that they've been in, and just compare all of that to your superintendent profile. And then, you know, we'll of course look at their skill sets as well.
So the background checks will be very thorough, both in the main office of Ray and Associates, and we will be working on those and calling all social media, calling references, doing background checks, and doing everything possible to learn every single thing that we can learn about every single applicant. Then, on Saturday, January 20th, is a big day. I'm sure it's on your calendars. We assume that will be about a four-hour meeting where we will bring to you a pool of candidates to consider for initial interviews, and we expect to chunk out a lot of work that day.
So what we will need on the 20th is, and I'll work with your clerk of the board to find the appropriate space, but you'll be looking at video clips that day as well. So you'll want to have a space where we can view the video clips. Remember, each applicant that we bring to you will have a short, less than three-minute video introducing themselves and answering two questions that apply to your district. And then we'll go through the applications, and we'll have a matrix that we'll ask you to mark as you compare applicant one to applicant two, one to three, one to four, one to five, and we'll do the same with the second, third, fourth, and fifth applicant. So that by the time we're finished, and it usually does take four hours, that is not an exaggeration, you'll be able to see from the matrix and from what you viewed and what you read that there'll probably be six or seven candidates that will pop to the top that you will then want to invite in for interviews. So we'll want to ask you also to bring your calendars and your new board members as well because we'll want to schedule time in your calendar for those initial and final interviews so that as we invite folks to come back to meet with the board, that they, we can explain to them what the process is, what the dates are, and you know what the dates are because we need all seven board members present for the interviews. So do you have any questions? This is kind of exciting.
Ms. Matt?
I do, and just do you have a general sense of similar experience, size of district?
Yes, these districts run the gamut from over a million students, which are some of the largest districts in the United States, and those are deputy superintendents and associate superintendents, to, of course, we have some applicants from very tiny districts that probably would not be a good fit for this district because in their entire repertoire of administrative experiences, they haven't been a superintendent in any, or even an assistant superintendent or principal in a larger district. So you'll have a broad pool of candidates, I think, to pull from. We haven't really vetted these candidates yet. We just took a cursory view of their applications because we just had about 48 hours to do that, so.
And just for clarity's sake, so you said 32 of them are deputies, assistants, associates, et cetera. Does that mean, if I do my math correctly, that 33 of them have superintendent experience?
30 of them have superintendent experience.
30 of them are sitting superintendents.
Sitting superintendents, right. That leaves a...
30 plus 32 is 60. Okay, great.
Out of 65, so you've got three individuals who have different roles.
That's where I was wondering.
Yes. I just didn't delineate what those roles are.
Got it. Thank you.
Other questions?
It's really a great number. You know, we had hoped to have between 50 and 51. It's really a great number, you know, we had hoped to have between 50 and 60, and so with 65, and maybe if those six additional candidates in the next 24 hours can get their applications completed, you may be close to 70. So, you know, that's a, that's a great pool of candidates to, for us to help you call out for whom you'd like to interview. So we're pleased, I hope you are. And I also, if you'd like, I have what I just told you in writing, but I wanted you to be listening. May I give them to you?
We didn't need to copy this note. Do you have extras for...
Probably do.
You probably have two or three, maybe four extras there.
Well, we appreciate your report, and thank you very much. We'll sit on the sidelines and see what happens. All right, Dr. Southwick, are we up for a program of studies?
Yeah, our last presentation tonight is Program of Studies. Tonight, the Program of Studies, elementary through high school, appears on the agenda for approval, and I've asked Dr. Denny and Dr. Dennis to come and give us an overview of what's contained in those documents, and then later on, you'll have an opportunity to vote on those.
Dr. Denny, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Southwick, thank you for providing us the opportunity to share with you some of our work regarding the proposed revisions to the Shawnee Mission Programs of Study. At this time, Dr. Dennis, who chaired the review process for the elementary and the middle school programs of studies, will share with you an overview.
It's my pleasure tonight to share with you a little bit about the elementary and middle school programs of study and the changes that have been proposed. I'll start with the elementary, because that's the easiest. The elementary program of study is essentially the same as it was last year. The only significant change is the addition of Lenexahills as a site. Other than that, we went through a fairly significant revision a couple of years ago, we feel like that is still appropriate, and so the contents of the book itself, other than the location and phone number of Lenexahills, is the same as it's been. For the middle school program of study, we went through a much more extensive process, and you have an outline of what those changes are. I'm not going to go through them item by item, but I want to kind of highlight some of the major changes, and they fall into four categories. They are a reordering of the contents, an updating of contents, clarifying of contents, and then formatting of contents. In the first instance, in reordering, we took a section that had been at the end that dealt with the process of enrolling in middle school courses and information about those courses from the back of the book to the front, so that it would be easier for parents and for middle school students to locate and to consider as they were making their enrollment decisions. In terms of updating, that's probably the more significant, at least, number of changes. We've, and I'll highlight a few of those, we added a section about the individual program, individual plan of study, which is a new requirement from the state, and it's a requirement at the middle and high school levels. We are just in the beginning process of implementing that process. We've formed a task force that represents, really, elementary through high school, to determine what that looks like in Shawnee Mission. And so while this is a section about the individual plan of study, it will need to be revised next year as we complete our task force process and determine more about what that will look like in Shawnee Mission School District. We've added one course this year, Exploring Digital Media. It's a class that was piloted at Indian Hills and Indian Woods very successfully, so that will now be offered at all five sites. We have removed counselor recommendation from several courses that are labeled individual goals, and I call it an update because it really is more appropriately a decision of the individual education plan. It's a special ed type course, and so really, the counselor who may be part of the discussion, but it's the team that makes that decision. And so there are several courses throughout the book that have that designation. We've combined SEEK, which is what we call our gifted classes, instead of individual seventh grade and eighth grade classes, those are now combined to give us a little more flexibility, and we have updated the global, the signature program page to remove global systems, which is no longer a signature program. In terms of clarifying, there weren't a lot of clarifications to be made, but we did highlight on page nine the courses that do earn high school credit. There's a reference in the high school program of studies that that will be marked in the middle school program, and so we've tried to make, and it was there, but this tries to make it more clear to the reader. And finally, there are various formatting changes that happen throughout the book in terms of font and size and configuration, just to make it a more readable document. And so with that, I would be glad to answer any questions, or Dr. Strick.
Any questions about middle school?
I do want to thank Mr. Stratton for pointing out a typo that we will take care of before, before we get this out to schools.
I do have a quick question, because I received a phone call from a patron about the SEEK courses, that seventh and eighth grade were combined. Does that mean that those students who may take those courses can only take them for one year?
No, they can take them both years, it's just a matter of what section they go into, and this allows us to have seventh and eighth graders in the same classroom.
Okay, thank you.
As for the high school version, I have the privilege of doing the speaking, but the real work was accomplished through a team approach. The primary purpose of the Program of Studies is to serve as a communication tool, providing students and their families with information about courses and programs, so that they can update their individual plans of study, and that would allow them to be able to generate a plan to ensure that they have the tremendous opportunities that are available within our high schools and beyond. Our high school administrators who are in attendance tonight assume great leadership in this process. I want to give a special thanks to Brock Winzaker, who helped create a new system for our team to review and vet changes in real time, which I would not have had the technological background to do. Our leadership and learning team members, especially Dr. Dennis, Dr. Gilhouse, Dr. Gruman, Lea Vamoff, and Kim Barney have worked tirelessly to bring about the proposed changes that you're reviewing. So that I don't leave anyone out, we would not be able to accomplish this work without the guidance from several individuals, in particular John Douglas, Jackie Chapman, Sherry Dumblin, Laura Brogdon, Dr. Ziegler, and Richard Kramer. I also want to give a special accolade to Sheris Bury, who serves as our administrative assistant. She has worked tirelessly to ensure that the new program is formatted within a new software system, and hopefully you have noticed the change in presentation. She has worked in tandem with the communications department to create the document that you see in the cover that is before you in relation to our new Shawnee Mission logo. Terry Wintering also provided extensive editing experience, looking at the document more times than she probably wanted to look. Finally, a big thank you to our teachers and counselors, who have been the voice for orchestrating many of the changes that are before you, and they've served as a sounding board to ensure that the changes we captured are better meeting the needs of our students. We realize the Program of Studies is in a constant state of evolution. To be quite honest, our high school principals and our leadership and learning team, we began the process for revising this current 19, or 18, 19 version, right after board approval of the 17, 18 version. It is a never-ending process, and the changes that we've provided for you within that table were provided to show you program changes, edits to courses in relation to prerequisites, course description changes, those types of things, as well as addition of new courses and deletion of prior course, or of previous courses that did not meet the needs of our students or had very low enrollment, because students do vote with their feet in terms of enrollment. At this time, I would be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Questions? Okay, thank you, Dr. Strick.
Thank you. I will also mention, a little later in the, on the board agenda, there's revisions to IHF, which governs board policy governing graduation requirements. The changes are minimal in that we're trying to remove 17, because it's not needed in terms of a graduating class, and what it was designed to do, those edits were designed to mirror the changes that are proposed within the Program of Studies, in particular, the new Navy Defense Corps program that's offered at West. Thank you.
Dr. Denny, that concludes our presentation.
Which brings us to open forum, the ever-popular audience participation game. And tonight, we have Bruce Carter, who's our first speaker.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. I'm Bruce Carter, patron, retired in 2012, and Dr. Southwick, I think I qualify for love of the district. When I retired in 2012, I ended 123 years of service by my family to this district. My great-grandmother Carter's sister, Lucy Egglehoff, started teaching in a little country school that's now known as Mill Creek in 1889. She had to resign in 1892 to marry Uncle John Anderson, that was, you know, not allowed in those days. And in this world where, the Shawnee Mission world, where Catherine Carpenter and Dorothy Moody are known as buildings, in my family, they're Aunt Kate and Cousin Dottie, or Uncle Perry and Aunt Lizzie's girl, in the case of Dorothy. So I've been around a long time. I'm currently on staff at Ottawa University, I serve on Kansas Families for Public Education, and I just got through grading my 200th teaching sample for this Kansas State Department of Education, so I finished that over the weekend. I am here tonight to say thank you to three outgoing board members, Donna Bisfield, Dr. Craig Denny, and this neighbor lady over here, Cindy. I've known these people for a long time. Donna, it's been 64 years combined for the three of you, thank you for your email. I knew Craig and Cindy's numbers because of help with those campaigns, and that's the year that Andrew Carter decided to join us on this planet, and he just turned 20 in July and just finished his third semester at West Point Military Academy. So thank you all for your service, I'm going to try to do this without tears, this is almost my 46th year in education, and it gets pretty personal. There's this guy up here named Denny, one of his daughters is a former student, his wife, may that dear lady rest in peace, was my room mother that year. So this gets pretty personal, and Craig, I'm sorry I was not here when she passed away, I was in other parts called McPherson College as Associate Professor of Education there. And then there's this neighbor lady, when I was at Rising Star, she was administrative assistant, wasn't that the term at that point, Cindy? They changed titles all the time, so I'm never sure. And Cindy was a large staff, it was a busy staff, and Cindy, I was reminded yesterday, as I was at the cemetery putting wreaths on graves, that you had that wonderful task of organizing things that kind of fall through the cracks sometimes, and Cindy had to orchestrate condolences for my family twice in 18 months for the most horrific thing a parent ever goes through. And as my mother said, who lost two infants and a teenage daughter, it's like a knife through your heart, so I thank you for your support through all of that, it was a, it was a pretty rough time. And so anyway, thank you three for all that you've done, this doesn't even begin to cover it. And Cindy, my outgoing words to you are like they were to Nancy Lust at her reelection party on Saturday night, I've ordered two pairs of walking shoes, you know, I've done a lot of ground campaigns, give me a call, I'm ready to go. Thank you all so much.
And Linda Seek.
Good evening, I'm Linda Seek, my address is 5901 West 89th Terrace, Overland Park, and I'm a teacher at Shawnee Mission East, but tonight I'm here as NEA Shawnee Mission President and a member of the United Team. Nearly a year ago, I stood before you to introduce to you United, which stands for, an acronym that stands for uniting, Understanding the Necessity for Intentional Training in Empathy and Diversity, and shared with you our dream for developing and implementing professional development opportunities for educators in our district in the area of cultural competence. Over the past year, our United Team has grown and includes teacher and administrator facilitators in every district school. For the August 7th Professional Learning Day, United led six sessions on a wide range of issues, including understanding immigration, the language of inclusive environments, the cultural side of disability, how to discuss difficult topics, and what poverty looks like in Johnson County. Tonight, I'm here to tell you about our first United Conversations program that will be held on January 16th from 1:00 to 3:30 in the Shawnee Mission West Auditorium. This will be a panel discussion, and it is entitled Poverty in Johnson County, Shawnee Mission School District in Your Classroom, and it features David Aramovich from our own Shawnee Mission School District, Valerie Carson from United Community Services of Johnson County, Destin Hardison from Catholic Charities of Northeast Kansas, as well as Shawnee Mission School District staff, excuse me, Shawnee Mission School District students and community members. This program is open to all Shawnee Mission School District staff, as well as the community, and our hope is that this first conversation, hopefully one in a series that will follow, will help us gain insight into our students and ultimately make our schools and our classrooms safer and more inclusive places for our kids, and we hope that many of you, all of you, can join us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Kim Whitman.
Hello, my name is Kim Whitman, my address is 4020 West 95th Terrace, I have two children at Trailwood Elementary. I was here tonight to urge you to oppose the employment contract extension for the deputy superintendent, and then about 4 o'clock this afternoon, I got out my red pen and I marked through my tuck, and instead, I was going to thank you for recognizing the unrest with the issue and pulling it from the agenda, and then I got to the meeting and heard Dr. Southwick speak, and so instead, I'd like to thank him for recognizing that. I would still like to address one point regarding compensation, I'm sure it's not new information but worth repeating. When the new board considers future contracts, I hope they will think critically about compensation for our district's top administrators. The Kansas government open records website indicates that the previous superintendent was the second highest-paid K through 12 state employee. The deputy superintendent is the 10th highest paid in the state of Kansas, however, he would actually rank much higher with the $34,500 raise that the board gave him in June of this year. The Shawnee Mission School District has five employees in the top 20 highest-paid K through 12 employees in this state, according to the website. That is 25% of the top 20 spots, much more than any other district. In April, the Shawnee Mission Post reported that since 2012, the number of senior administrators and their salaries have grown from 11 people earning a total of $1.5 million to 28 people earning a total of nearly $3.8 million. To give our children the best possible education, I believe we need to redirect those millions of dollars away from the central office and back to our teachers and classrooms. I would also like to thank the three outgoing board members for their years of service. I am extremely excited for the new board members to be seated next month, and I'm confident that this issue will be addressed. Thank you.
All right, now we move to approval of minutes for the regular meeting of November 27th.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, that was Mrs. Zila, and this is a good one, right?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Pass 7-0. Special meeting of December 13.
So moved.
Mrs. Mack, and Mr. Stratton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Pose same sign. Adopted seven-zero. Adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion? Mrs. Bisfield, thank you.
Second.
Second, Mrs. Goodburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Adopted seven-zero. Which gets us to approval of routine business by consent. Is there any item that any board member wishes to withdraw? Seeing none, is there a motion? Mrs. Neuber.
Did you want to pull some? Go ahead. Sorry. I saw you waving.
Mrs. Neuber.
I would move approval of routine business by consent.
Second.
Second, Mrs. Zila. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Adopted seven-zero. Which moves us down on the agenda to, where do we go? We get N-one, looks like that's where we are. Yep, N-one, approval of the twenty-eighteen-nineteen school calendar. I see Dr. Atha approaching the podium.
Dr. Atha spent a lot of hours trying to manipulate the calendar and make as many people happy as we can. Good luck, but actually modifications up until just a few things, until this evening. But we appreciate your work, and why don't you tell us a little bit about what you've got on the calendar for next year?
Thank you, Dr. Southwick. Dr. Denny, members of the Board of Education. This evening, the administration is proposing the 2018 district calendar for your consideration. It is very similar to our current calendar, and it aligns to Kansas State law, the Kansas State Department of Education's required guidelines, and all but one component of the professional negotiated agreement. I'd like to draw your attention to January three and January four. The professional negotiated agreement states the first day of Semester Two will be a Teacher Work Day. NEA Shawnee Mission has asked for an exception to our agreement. For this year only, they have requested that the Teacher Facilitated Learning Day be scheduled for January three, followed by the Teacher Work Day on January four. The administration fully supports NEA Shawnee Mission's recommendation. What this will do, if approved this evening, the Teacher Facilitated Learning Day is a day where teachers have the flexibility sometime during the semester to acquire that professional learning or that professional development. And then, they have a flex day, which would be, in essence, this would extend their winter break by one day if they earn that professional development before then. Although, they could do it on that day if they desired to do so. This is an example of giving teachers more flexibility in their professional learning. That goes along with the parent-teacher conferencing, where teachers have more flexibility, parents have more flexibility to conference with teachers and schedule throughout the semester, rather than just maybe on one specific day. As you know, this is the first year we've tried this. We would like to continue this in this year's calendar to see how it works. Can always be changed back if it's not received well by the, by the teachers and by the, by the community. But by and large, we're getting pretty good feedback in reference to the parent-teacher conferences and the Teacher Facilitated Professional Learning Day. I think a lot of people enjoyed the week of Thanksgiving off, if they earned it that week. We've yet to experience in the spring, that's yet to come. It should be noted that we have sought the input of SMAC PTA, NEA Shawnee Mission, parents and stakeholders in the development of this calendar. And it is without reservation that I recommend this 2018-nineteen calendar to you this evening for your consideration. I stand ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Dr. Atha?
No, I applaud you for your efforts, though, in really trying to balance the quarters, because I know that we used to have significant issues in, in the third quarter. Because, a lot of times, because of the holidays that we have in the third quarter. But there's really a great balance between the four quarters, and I think that's great. And I love the weekend. I didn't hear from anything, from anybody about the week of Thanksgiving, that they didn't approve of that, so I think that's great, too. It might have been a change, and might have been, some people might have caught them off guard a little bit, parents that didn't realize that their students had the whole week off, but I think it's a, a great change.
Well, I'm fully aware there's no perfect calendar out there. We're going to start in August, and we're going to end in May. And we're going to fulfill Kansas State law and, and requirements and meet the PNA of the district. We also have, if you've noticed, more complete weeks. That was a complaint or concern that our patrons had, that we had too many broken weeks. And just by the calendar, you're going to have some of those, with Martin Luther King Day falling on a Monday, President's Day falling on a Monday, so on and so forth. But we were able to add, in this current year's calendar, and will be in next year's calendar if you approve it, at least six more full weeks than what we had two years ago. I will also tell you that if approved this evening, we will, we've got a couple of things that we need to work out with, with our teachers and the professional negotiated agreement. But if we can work that out through a memorandum of understanding with, you know, teacher facilitated professional learning and a couple of other things, we might be able to bring another calendar back for, to you to add on to the year and have two years approved. Probably one of the main concerns or complaints that I'm receiving is, when's spring break two years out? Because parents and families are planning ahead, and our sister school districts are, are putting out a two-year calendar. I can't tell you why we haven't. I can tell you why we haven't over the last couple of years, but, and it's mostly because we, we've been working on several things with our teachers through negotiations, and, and I think if we can get a couple or three of those things worked out, and I feel confident that we will, that we'll be able to bring you back a, another calendar to have two years.
Very good. Mrs. Mack.
Yes, I wanted to echo what Sarah said about the Thanksgiving break, especially from staff members. I heard nothing but positive things. I also want to tell you, from a personal standpoint, I appreciate that the calendar year will end before Memorial Day weekend. And with that, I would like to move for approval of the calendar.
Okay, Mrs. Mack. Is there a second? Second, Mrs. Neuber. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Adopted seven-zero. All right. So, now we move to P-one, I think, right? Yep. Dr. Southwick, this is approval of the purchase agreement.
We do. Again, I will remind the board and our audience that this is a part of the bond that was passed in fifteen, and the, the promise that we would deliver the fields that we did, not only to our middle school and high school, but also to redo the soccer stadium at Westridge. So, we're winding that down to the end with respect to our fields. And I think you, you approved potentially, I think, last month for us to pull the carpet up at a couple of places and replace. This actually is new installation of two fields at Westridge. So, Deputy Superintendent would make a recommendation that you approve this work to be done in the amount of one million, four-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars, of which was set aside in the bond to work with ATG Sports Industries, a group that we've worked with over the past several years, to deliver these fields. Mr. Robinson, I'll give him, and also Mr. Kramer. We have worked on the scheduling of these so that hopefully we have the least amount of impact to our students in terms of making those fields available.
Okay, is there a motion?
I would move approval.
Second.
Mrs. Zila, followed by Mrs. Goodburn. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Adopted seven-zero. P-two, Dr. Southwick, this is a website platform design.
Yeah, so about a year ago, we were involved in some changes in our website. The end result of that is, we entered into a contract. There was actually a thirty-day notice clause on that, that we exercised earlier this year because we were having some trouble with the deliverables with the company. So, I'll give credit to Shawna. She reached out with the work and help of Dr. Atha to look at the next person that we had in line, who also had, we thought, favorable deliverables. We, the presentation that we make tonight is over a multiple, I think, five-year period, and actually will cost us a little less money than what the board would spend with our other group. I'm not going to mention any names tonight from people that we were working with, because I don't think that's necessary. We've severed that relationship, but we do, and as I've worked with Shawna very carefully, this is an important piece of our communication platform. She's made some commitments to me that we will, after this agreement's passed, will hit the ground running, and we hope to, by the end of the school year, if maybe not a little earlier, start to work across those sixty sites in the district for that platform. So, I'd make a recommendation that we move forward.
Okay.
I move approval.
Mrs. Bisfield?
Second.
Mr. Stratton? Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Adopted seven-zero. Now, we have approval of a policy that I think Dr. Strick referenced a few minutes ago. IHF graduation requirements.
This does put the board in line, not only with the new graduation requirements, but some wording adjustments. And I would recommend that we do this on a first reading. And then, we will be in compliance with our board policy, in line with our program of studies.
Okay.
On the same date.
Yep. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Neuber?
Second.
Mrs. Bisfield, pardon me. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Adopted seven-zero. So, now we hit the Board Financial Report, which is, we receive every month.
Russell is here, if the board has any questions with respect to that. I don't think there's any abnormalities or any oddities in that, but if you have questions, I would defer Mr. Knapp.
Well, it seems to me if we get a pretty good audit from an outside firm, I don't know how Mr. Knapp is going to make too many mistakes in this report.
We'd hope not.
Anybody have any questions? All right, so, that brings us to Board comments. Comments from board members, I guess. Are there comments from board members? Whoops, Mrs. Mack.
Thank you, Dr. Denny. A couple of things before the business at hand. First of all, I'd like to say, Mrs. Zila and I attended the Mark Breakfast last Friday. You saw the picture with Joan Levens, where she accepted a reward on behalf of the district. What was very apparent to me is how many partnerships Joan Levens has established throughout this community. We talk about being in the right seat on the bus, and she definitely is. It was a, a great morning for our district. A lot of people were there, and Joan did a terrific job. It was, it was an honor. Communications, let, started by Dr. Neal, taken on by Shawna and Erin. Thank you for that tonight. Erin, you will be missed. On a personal note, I hope our paths cross again someday. On a very personal note, I want to echo what Dr. Southwick said tonight. Thank you for saying those words tonight. I have a positive mindset as we move forward, and I think moving forward is, is, are the right words. What I've always tried to keep in mind is that we are a school district, and that, and that the children are watching. And that's the mindset I'm planning on continuing. As a returning board member, there's three of us, there's four of us that are returning in January. Three of us are not currently in leadership, and the three of us talked, and we decided that it might be a good idea if we talk about the board members who are leaving. This is their last official meeting. I don't think they knew this was coming tonight, but we all felt, the, the three of us, Sarah, Deb, and I, not to leave Brad out, but the three of us are not in leadership this year, but we wanted to take this opportunity as part of an official record, if you will. Bruce, you stole some of our thunder, but not all of it. No, we were, I was, thank, thank you. Thank you, that was a great intro. We want to thank all of you for your endless hours and your devotion to our students and to our community. All three of you have been a mentor to me, but tonight, I have the honor of, of talking about Cindy Neuber. So, I'm going to, I, I'm going to start tonight. I've known Cindy the longest. I've worked with her, shared many personal moments with her. I first met her because we both live in Shawnee. And if you know Cindy at all, you know that she's pretty visible in Shawnee. She's visible throughout our community, but she's always been extremely visible, very approachable. I appreciate your candor. You and I have always been extremely honest and straightforward with each other. You always see what the crux of the matter is. Your ability to retain numbers and your intelligence just shows through all the things that you have to analyze and look at. I've always been extremely impressed by that. I called Susan Metzger, a board member that you worked with for a long time, and I think she said something very well. She said, "I've known Cindy a long time, through PTA, through advisory boards, and Cindy was vice president when Susan was president in oh-three." And she said, "One thing I've always appreciated about Cindy is that she's very faithful to her position." You're also faithful to your community, be it Shawnee Mission, Shawnee, or the state of Kansas. We were just in Wichita, celebrating a hundred years of KASB. And Cindy was honored as a former KASB president. And so, I reached out to John Heim, who's the current executive director, and this is what he had to say about Cindy Neuber. "Since beginning her service on the KASB Board of Directors twenty years ago, and distinguished by her serving as KASB president in two thousand and one, Cindy has distinguished herself as an advocate for the children of Shawnee Mission and of Kansas." We all know that. We all know that you're an advocate for children, and we know that you will continue to be. For me, as a former rookie to public office, and here Deb and I are going to be sitting now as the senior members of the board. Yeah. You, you've taught me to listen to others. You've also, also always taught me to remember that I represent as an elected official, and I will always be mindful of that. I also appreciated tonight that you approved the routine business by consent. I'll always smile and think of you when we go through that on the agenda. Thank you for all you've done, and will continue to do. On behalf of our families, our students, thank you. Endless hours, you don't obviously do this for the money, but to me, you are a warrior. And I'm grateful to have been able to be your colleague, and I'm excited to continue to be your friend. I also reached out to this guy that, I always call him your boyfriend, but he's been your husband for a long time. And this, he couldn't be here tonight. And this is what he had to say. This is Jim Neuber speaking about his wife Cindy. "I have watched with admiration and respect as my best friend, has worked tirelessly for over three decades to achieve the best possible education and facilities for the generations of students that have passed through the doors of Shawnee Mission School District, SMSD five-twelve during that time. She consistently has shown her integrity and character, championing what she believes is right for the district, students, staff, and patrons in her quiet, yet effective voice. She will continue to advocate for the best possible education for all Kansas children in Topeka, drawing on her wealth of knowledge and experience at Shawnee Mission. Thank you, dear. You're my champion. Love, Jim." Thank you, Cindy. Thank you, Cindy.
The only reason I came tonight was Patty drove me. I have three broken ribs. And I've been sleeping in a chair and laying in a chair and not moving. So you are my encouragement tonight, thank you.
That's my warrior.
Craig, Cindy, and Donna, it's been my distinct pleasure.
That's okay.
Looking back at you, serving with you over the past six-plus years. Our community, the students, the families, the businesses, and the 14 Johnson County cities that this district serves have benefited greatly from your 64 combined years of service to this board and district. And frankly, the ripple effect of those benefits are impossible to measure, nor will probably ever be equaled. I am proud of you all, your work ethic, your ever-vigilant student-first mentality, your generosity, and your unwavering dedication to this district. My sincerest gratitude to each one of you for your time, talents, wisdom, mentorship, caring kindness, and above all, friendship. But it's time to turn my focus to Donna Bisfield, who has spent 24 years on this board. She's served numerous times in leadership, board president, vice president. Before that, she spent a considerable amount of time serving on PTAs and leadership at about every level, at about every level, and advisory boards when they existed. Whether taking phone calls, emails, or answering questions for patrons in the line at her neighborhood henhouse, she has a calm and calming demeanor about her, which has served her well over these years in this position, no doubt. When I first thought about running for this board back in 2011, Donna was the first person that I met with. Her wealth of knowledge and ability to share it has proven invaluable. There is absolutely no one that I would rather spend countless hours doing a comprehensive review of board policies than with you. You are a gem, a true champion of public education, and I will miss the history and wisdom that you so willingly share. My very best wishes to you and Frank and the whole Bisfield family, always and forever. You will be missed."
Thank you. My turn. Sarah, I couldn't have said it better. I would echo everything she said about what a delight it has been to work with all three of you these past years, our 11 years, 10 years, wherever we're at with that. But my focus tonight was on Dr. Denny, who we seem to have a lot in common as far as our alma mater and everything. So that's who I will zero in on. And he has so many accolades that I don't know that everyone knows about. So I just kind of concentrated on the person that he is and all the things that he's done. Dr. Craig Denny has served the students and staff of the Shawnee Mission School District since 1997. I gotta put my glasses on. For 20 years, he was devoted, he has devoted his logic, vision, passion, and humor to guide this school district while being a key member of the Board of Education. He has been elected to leadership eight times and has been an exemplary leader for this board and the Shawnee Mission School District. Craig and Terry Denny raised three daughters, all of whom graduated from Shawnee Mission West. The girls have all married and are raising children of their own. So his dedication to excellence in our schools continues on a very personal level as well. Terry Denny lost her battle with leukemia in 2015. Craig's philanthropic energies are spread across several organizations and municipalities. The recognition and awards that Craig has received are truly too numerous to mention for a synopsis of his distinguished accomplishments, but I can touch on several highlights tonight. Both Craig and Terry are graduates of Iowa State, where Craig received both his BS and master's degree in civil and soil engineering, respectively. He and Terry were staunchly devoted alums of ISU, and Craig continued to hold key roles at Iowa State. He continues to this day, actually. He earned his PhD in civil engineering from the University of Kansas in 1999. Craig is a proud Army veteran and served in the Corps of Engineers, beginning active duty in 1974, and served in the reserves until 1983. He has worked for Terragon, Terricon Consultants his entire engineering career, where he is still a senior principal, but is now tapering his work schedule towards retirement. Craig has been and is still involved in multiple capacities in organizations. He's been a member of the American Society of Civil Engineers, ASE, which I know well from my husband's engineering background, since 1971, and been recognized for several awards, including, and this is a very short list of his many awards, Engineer Citizen Award, Life Member Award, and the very prestigious Lifetime Achievement Award that he was given in 2015. In Lenexa, Craig has served on the Chamber of Commerce in various roles, as well as on the Board of Directors and as chairman. He has served on the Lenexa Parks and Recreation Board since 1995 and was named to the Lenexa Volunteer Hall of Fame in 1994. We call him Mr. Lenexa. Craig's devotion to the SMSD is rivaled by his Iowa State alma mater. There, he serves on the Alumni Association Board of Directors and the ISU Board of Directors, supports the university with both scholarships and endowments. The School of Education, where Terry studied, has a literacy classroom bearing Terry Denny's name, and there's a conference room named in their honor in the College of Engineering. In 2014, the Denny family generously devoted funds, funding to the Shawnee Mission Education Foundation for STEM to support our students and teachers' programs in the district. Thank you so very much for your service to our kids these past 20 years, Craig. You've been a great fellow board member, mentor, and a friend to all of us. We wish you the very best in your future endeavors and adventures, as I know there will be many of both in the years to come for you. So thank you very much.
I think wine will be involved.
I'll offer up a simple thank you. There's no way I can say it any better than my colleagues have said today. I've been the rookie here for two years, and it's been an honor to serve with you, and you will be role models going forward. Thank you for your service.
All right. And Mr. Stratton, you have a motion to make.
Before we do that, could I make an announcement, please? On January 8th, prior to the time that the new board would seat, I have, as interim superintendent, have called for a small reception at 6:15 to honor the outgoing board members. It won't have anything to do as a part of the board meeting, but it will provide an opportunity for those of you that would like to come and share comments. So that will start at 6:15, and we hope to be finished by about a quarter till 7:00, but we hope to see some faces there, so.
Thank you, Dr. Southwick. And now, your motion.
Mr. President, I move. We go into executive session to discuss the interim superintendent pursuant to non-elected personnel exception under coma. And the meeting will resume in the boardroom at 9:45. No business will be conducted following the executive session.
Second.
Second. Mrs. Zila? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Adopted, seven zero. All right.